All right, good evening. I call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District Order. Let the record show that a core of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called. And a notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. This time, if you'll please rise for the pledges and a word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
If you please remain standing with us tonight, we have a deacon Kevin Hader from First Baptist Church of Bastrop. Will offer us an opening prayer this evening. Welcome.
Opportunity to bring you to the throne of God is, I'm a 1982 graduate of Bastrop High School. So, thank you. Let's bow in prayer. Father, we thank you for this day that you've given to us. Lord God, heavenly father, we thank you that our creator, the one that created us, chooses to be a part of every detail of our lives, Lord God. And we pray for this meeting tonight, this school board meeting. I lift up to you the directors of the school board members, Father. And I pray, Father, that you'll give them wisdom. I pray, Father, that you'll give them strength, discernment, Father, to make the decisions for the schools, Father, and for the community as well to, as we are growing. And we just, we pray for direction, Lord God, to be able to accommodate that growth. Father, we're thankful for the, all the events that are going on and the results of those events. As we have awards, and, Lord God, we thank you for the talents and the gifts that you've given those that have accomplished those and earned these gifts tonight, Lord God. And, Father, we pray for our teachers. I lift them up to you in prayer. I pray, Father, that you will give them your eyes to see the children and the students of these schools, Lord God. And you'll continue to give them patience. You'll give them patience when they need it. Lord God, you'll give them strength when they need it, Father. And, Father, we just continue to fill them with the creativity that they have, Lord God, to work in our schools and the patience that they have, Father. And lastly, Lord God, I pray for the students. And I lift them up to you in prayer, Father. And I pray, I pray, Father, that you, I remember, I pray that you will hear, continue to hear the prayers of those that, at the beginning of the school year, may have walked the campuses of here in Bastrop and Cedar Creek and the other surrounding areas, Father, and prayed over these campuses and prayed, Father, that you would put a hedge of protection around them, Lord God. And I pray, Father, that you'll continue to hear those prayers and continue to keep our children safe. Continue to bless our children, Father. And, Father, that their voices will be heard tonight, Lord God, if they speak. I ask these things in your son's name, Jesus Christ, my Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll move along to our student speaker. Character education trait for January is loyalty. Mr. Edwards, would you please introduce our student speaker, please?
Yes, it would certainly be my pleasure. I would like to introduce everyone to Miles Washington. Let's see where Miles, there's Miles. Miles, come on up here. I'd like to introduce you to Miles. He attends Red Rock Elementary School. He's in third grade. He is an outstanding student and a wonderful young leader. Miles has a passion for both soccer and art and also participates in basketball. As a gifted and talented student, Miles excels academically with particularly love for reading. That's a good one to choose, Miles. Good job. Beyond his talents, Miles is an exceptional big brother and a caring role model who enjoys helping others. His positive attitude and commitment to making a difference inspire those around him. Miles?
Hello, my name is Miles Washington and I'm a third grader at Red Rock Elementary. I'm excited to be here today to talk about what loyalty means to me. To me, loyalty means always being there for the people you care about. It's about being a good friend, a great teammate, and a kind brother. Whether it's at practice, at home, or at school, I think loyalty is about standing by others, helping them when they need it, and showing that you can be trusted in. Loyalty also means working hard and staying true to what's important to you. For me, that's my family and my friends. When we're loyal, we make our family friendships and our community stronger because we know we can count on each other. I hope we can all show loyalty every day in the little and big ways that make a difference. Thank you for letting me share with loyalty, Miss Amey.
Great job, Miles. Stay there, just one second, stay there, just one second. Two things. We have a gift for you that we'd like to give you for doing this because it takes a lot of courage to do that. And I also want to meet your family. I want to see everybody that's here with you. If they could stand up and you could tell us who they are. There they are, come on. Introduce them, Miles.
I have my mom with me, my dad, my younger brother, Jace, my Nini, my grand, my great-grandfather, and my great-grandma.
Thank you all for sharing him with us. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Edwards, I believe you're going to introduce our SSAC members here tonight?
Yes, we have two of our, well, for the audience's information, every month I meet with the student advisory group from each of the high schools. And tonight, we have two representatives here. And we're one of the only districts around that have students sit in consultation to the board. So when there's thoughts that come up that involve students, they're here to give us their opinions and share any of the thoughts they may have. And I'm going to ask Emma and Isabella to introduce themselves to you all and tell us what they'd like to do when they get done with high school.
Hi. Emma Griesenbeck. I'm a senior at Bastrop High School. And after high school, I'm going to A&amp;M.
Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Isabella Conrady. I'm a sophomore at Circa. And after high school, I would like to go to college and then become a pediatrician.
Fantastic.
Thank you all, welcome.
Yes. All right, moving along in our recognitions and presentations, we have the Bastrop High School and Cedar Creek High School Band Region Honors as well as the Cedar Creek High School Choir and TMEA area honors. Dr. Christie Lee, our deputy superintendent, is our presenter here tonight.
Pass that off to Kendra Monk. She's serving as our interim director of fine arts.
Fantastic, welcome, Ms. Monk.
Good evening. I am the interim director of fine arts. My name is Kendra Monk. First up, we, first up, we're going to hear from Kenneth Gilbert, a BHS band.
Hello, everyone. Tonight, we have four of our students here. I want to introduce them really quickly. Yeah, you can go from here, guys, so everybody can see you. Over here on my left is, excuse me, Parker Barnett. He's one of our oboists. And then Cash Lutz on trumpet, Braden Fiskus clarinet, and Jacob Solis trombone. And we had, we had, the students that you see up on the screen, they also could not be here tonight. But we had about 14 students that made the region band. Back in July, they released the music for the audition and they have to prepare three etudes. And then they go to the audition in December, usually first week of December. And then two of those, we had three students that made the wind ensemble, which is the first group. And then the rest of those students, I think 11, 12 students that made the symphonic band. We also had two students that advanced to the area audition. In this process, they can get up to the all-state, make the all-state band if they get up high enough. And we had, let's see, Emma Estalour on saxophone and Landon Buckner on clarinet. And so those two students auditioned for the area band earlier this month. Unfortunately, they didn't get on to the next group, to the all-state group, but it's really, really challenging. But we're really, really proud of these students. They work really, really hard. They take private lessons, a lot of them, actually, I think most of them do. And then a lot of this is on their own. They receive the music. And to be honest, the directors are so busy with marching band and concerts and things like that. It's very, very individual thing where they work on this and take lessons and practice at home and practice at school and come in early and those kind of things. And so, first, I want to thank them for working so hard. Second, I want to thank their parents for supporting them, getting them an instrument. Their private lesson teachers that come out to Bastrop. We have several students that do that. Our other directors that work with them as needed. And then, of course, our principal, Ms. Gabriel, for all the support she gives us at high school. And then, and the board and our administration, who's always supported. This is my 10th year here in Bastrop. And I really, really do feel like Bastrop is extremely supportive of fine arts and our band programs, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Next, we'll welcome Mr. Dalton Davis, Cedar Creek High School Band.
Good evening, board. My name is Dalton Davis. I'm the very proud band director at Cedar Creek High School. Today, I have just a portion of our students who made region band. I have on my left Trevor Culpepper, who made the wind ensemble on percussion. And then Jerry Cordova Garcia, Gomez, my bad, who made it on trombone. This was Jerry's first year ever making on trombone. And he's really been working very hard and he's doing outstanding. I've been helping him with his solo that he's going to on Saturday at a contest. And he's very impressive. And then Trevor is our second student ever to make region on percussion. And so, these two individuals work very hard. Both of them are always in the band hall practicing. Just like what Mr. Gilbert said, we're in the same boat. And we're trying to get private lessons started. But currently, none of our students who made it took private lessons this year. It's just, it's harder to get people out at Cedar Creek. So, all of the, all the work done has been taught by either the band directors or themselves. And both of these individuals are very independent learners. Trevor's always in the band hall practicing, so is Jerry. So, I just want to say thank you to them and their dedication and hard work. I would also like to say thank you to Ms. Stagman, who's behind me, who is incredibly supportive of the band, always letting us do what we need to make sure the students are as successful as possible. And also like to, just mimic what Mr. Gilbert said. Bastrop ISD is incredibly supportive of the arts. We've never felt that we could be supported any more than we already have. It's such a blessing to work here. Like I said earlier, this is my 11th year. And I'm very, very proud of where I am and very, very proud of our students. So, thank you very much.
And finally, our choir teacher at Cedar Creek High School isn't able to be with us tonight. Ms. Madison Shortis wanted to recognize two of her students, Mia Benavides and Annabelle Bordelone. They both had remarkable achievements in the recent TMEA area auditions. Mia earned 15th chair and Annabelle earned 9th chair. And these students demonstrated excellent talent, dedication, and artistry in their work. And their success reflects the strength of the choir program and serves as an inspiration to their peers and to the entire school community. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Monk. Moving along to our Bastrop High School Bears football 2024 playoffs. Elliot Allen, our director of athletics, Mr. Allen.
Good evening, board and Mr. Edwards. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and recognize our Bastrop football team had an unbelievable year with undefeated district championship and I know made our town proud. So at this time, I would like to introduce Coach Jake Greedle and some of the captains.
Good evening. Before we get started, I want to introduce some of our captains. Thought that'd be better than having the entire football team here tonight. But we had four captains this year on our varsity football squad. Three of the great young men are right here, Andy McCarrish, Brian Pauly, and Ethan Bulak. Our fourth captain, Tiki Holle, cannot be with us tonight because he has an in-home visit with the University of Notre Dame. And so that's pretty cool for him and his future. And so, we had a lot of success this year as a program. A lot of it was attributed because of these leaders right here that were our team captains. Some of the quick highlights, we were district champs this year for the first time in 15 years. We won a playoff game for the first time in 15 years. We beat Liberty Hill, which is always outstanding. Since playing football here at Bastrop High School since 1911, this was the number one overall offense that's ever been put on the field and the top five defense, again, attributed to our great leadership. In our 2025 class, we have currently five, five young men who are committed to be student athletes at the next level, all on full-ride scholarships, adding up to over a million dollars in scholarship opportunity. And in the last calendar year, we've had 111 colleges come on campus. And so our program is getting nationwide attention. And ultimately, it's because of the commitment that Mr. Edwards, Coach Allen, Ms. Gabriel, our principal, and the school board has invested in our program. There was a study done at the University of Minnesota last year and within the NCAA that says that when new facilities are built and updated, there's, you'll see a 40% increase in success. You'll see a 15% increase in participation. And because of y'all's commitment, we're seeing the fruits of that right now. And so we're extremely grateful for y'all's commitment to athletics. We're extremely grateful to these young men, the hours and the dedication that they put into our program. And hopefully, we can give you guys a lot more years like we had this year. So, thank you, guys, and go Bears.
All right, moving along to our spotlight speaker for student attendance, Casey Lewis, our attendance improvement coordinator. Welcome.
Good evening. So glad to be here. Thank you for having me, Mr. Edwards and board. Again, my name is Casey Lewis and I am Bastrop ISD's first attendance improvement coordinator because we, of course, need to improve our attendance, as you already know. So I'm just going to start with our strategic plan. So our goal for this school year was to increase our student attendance from 92%, sorry, from 92% to 94%. We have a few strategies that we either have in place or we're working on getting into place to help us reach that goal for this year. So far, our attendance has actually been pretty well compared to last year. August has been the only month that we saw a deficit in our student attendance and it was only seven tenths of a percent. So, we are seeing a lot of good, good attendance rates for our students. And this data was to the end of the semester. But looking at January as well, we're already seeing an increase compared to last January. So, according to these percentages, we're seeing at least 574 more students that have increased their attendance from their previous years. And that also includes like 115 students that are attending more regularly. So, we are seeing a difference this year. We have a lot of great things in place for our student attendance. And the first thing I want to talk about is our Make Every Day Count District Contest. So we started this back in November. And it's just a monthly contest that encourages some competition in between our grade bands. So our elementaries, they battle against each other. Our intermediates and middles battle against each other. And then our high schools battle against each other as well. So, our winning campuses, they receive a banner that's in front of their campus to display for their students and their parents all month. And each month, we wanted to do something different instead of just looking at our highest attendance rates because we know that not all of our campuses are comparable to each other. So we were trying to spice it up a little bit. So November, we looked at highest attendance rate overall. December, we looked at our biggest improvement from November to December. Our contest right now for January is biggest improvement from January of last year to January of this year. And then February, we're looking at, just looking at the first and the last day of the week attendance because we tend to see usually our Mondays and Fridays don't tend to pair out as well as the other days in the week. So I just want to highlight, our November contest winners were Mina, Cedar Creek Intermediate, and Circa. And then our December contest winners were Colony Oaks, Bastrop Intermediate, and Circa as well. So, congratulations to those campuses. So, other than our district contests, we do have all of our campuses doing initiatives on their own campus. So they have school-wide rewards. So dress-up days, fun events planned on Mondays and Fridays to target those lower attendance days. Movies at lunch, grade-level contests. I know a couple of campuses actually brought in Kona Ice to award students for their perfect attendance. We've got class rewards going on. And then we're highlighting individual students as well. And then from the district, we also wanted to share what we're doing. So we've increased our parent communication and our education on student attendance. So our campus newsletters are going out, including attendance tidbits. We're including in our district newsletters more information about student attendance and the effect that it has on students increasing in grade levels. We've had a few parent engagement sessions on chronic absenteeism. And then we've been working with a few campuses on assisting parents on how to go into Skyward and check their attendance. We've also increased our collaboration with the Bastrop Municipal Court. So that means that we've increased our number of bilingual attendance officers that are serving our students. We have started parent education classes to reduce the chronic absenteeism. And then we've also tried to increase our school and community resources to try to remove some of those attendance barriers that we're seeing. I'm meeting with campuses at least one time per six weeks or nine weeks. We review our campus data as well as our TPMs, our truancy prevention measures. We talk about barriers that we're seeing on campus and what we can do either as a campus or a district to try to remove some of those barriers. And then we also talk about our campus-wide attendance initiatives. And then recently, I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting and shared the great things that are happening in Bastrop ISD. And we're just trying to get some collaboration with the businesses within Bastrop to see how they can help us as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next on our agenda is recognize the Bastrop ISD Board of Trustees. Mr. Barry Edwards, our superintendent.
Well, thank you very much. I do want to take a moment to recognize a very special group of people sitting right here before us. And that's our school board. If you haven't already noticed, as you look around the room, as Mr. Mutic said, I don't think it's ever looked this good and colorful and festive. Our students and staff across the district created these as a small token appreciation to celebrate our trustees for their dedication, commitment to the Bastrop Independent School District. And I can tell you firsthand, serving as a board member isn't just about attending meetings and reviewing reports, is it? It's about making decisions that shape the future of our students, our teachers, our schools, and ultimately, the entire community. These individuals give their time, their energy, their passion to ensure every child in Bastrop ISD has the opportunity to succeed. They face tough decisions. Many of you have been in the rooms when they face some of these decisions, sometimes very difficult conversations, and often spend hours preparing for meetings just like this one, all because they believe in the power of education. On behalf of our students, family, and staff, we are so grateful for all of you and all that you do. And so at this time, I'd like you to come up and be recognized. We're going to take a quick picture with your certificate. And again, thank you if you've joined me and giving them a round of applause.
The months and team building and all that. And we really do appreciate everything you do. And like Mr. Edwards said, there's a lot more to it than reading three or 700 pages of a board book and task me updates and policies and things like that. So anyways, thank you all very much. And please pass that back on to the campus. We do appreciate it.
I would be remiss if I didn't thank the board members' spouses and families for the time that they give to allow them and, well, hopefully, work with them to be here. So much so that I think this poster record, is it right here that it says, "Miss Mechnick?" Did you correct it? Someone sent me a picture and I said, "Yeah, that's very appropriate." She does do all the work.
She does, she does. And I do get that a lot in my business. I can't tell you how many of my customers, their spouses, meet me and go, "Oh, you're a gentleman." I said, "Yes, I am." So anyways, but thank you. It's awesome. And thanks for all the cards and the different things up here. Look forward to reading all those and the plaques and the pictures and things like that. I welcome you to my office at any time because I'd love to display this stuff. And it's a lot of fun. And I believe we've got a poster down here with some other things as well.
Yeah, Mr. Moore, show yours. Yours is really good. We will.
Awesome.
This is going to be a placemat on my table at home and I'm never going to move it. It's going to still face it every morning.
Before we leave recognition, I'd like to introduce some people to... Before we leave recognition, I'd like to introduce some people to the community and to the board. We have a couple new staff members and a couple people that we've recently promoted. I'd like to start by introducing Mike White. He's our new chief financial officer, sitting right up here in the front. Mike brings an extensive experience in school finance and is already making a difference for us, so I look forward to y'all hearing from him in future meetings. I'd also like to, I'm very proud to announce the promotion of Reyna Ellis. Reyna, where are you? There she is. Reyna's our new director of college and career military readiness. She was previously serving as our counselor coordinator and has a longstanding, is a longstanding member of the BISD family, so thank you to Reyna. Also, congratulations to Chris Laracy. There he is, stand up there, Chris. He is our new director of digital learning and library services. He's transitioning from his role as digital learning specialist. He has great relationships with teachers and staff, and we look forward to seeing his continued contribution. And then I'd like to conclude the introductions with another member that we are really excited about joining our family is Coach Jared Shaw. He is the new athletic coordinator and head coach at Cedar Creek High School. Coach Shaw comes to us from Coppers Cove, and you'll hear from the others at later times because they're at every month, but we're going to ask Coach Shaw to please come up here and say a few words, introduce his family, and welcome him in Bash Drop fashion to the school.
I appreciate you all for the opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Edwards, as well as the entire Board of Trustees. Coach Allen, Ms. Stagman, and the administration staff at Cedar Creek High School. There with the little one there is my wife and our youngest, Journey. So that's our Jana and Journey. My mom is in the corner there. My grandmother is here. So my oldest baby, Jordan, is there. My Aunt Diane is there, Dad, Larry, and then brother. He's also educator and coach as well. So I'm just very excited about the opportunity. I appreciate everybody for the opportunity. It's truly a dream come true for me, but not only for me, for my village as well, and everybody that's in this room that has helped me become the educator, the leader, and the person that I am today. And just truly excited about the opportunity. I've had an opportunity to visit with every athletic program there on campus across the board and touch base with every coach that is there, as well as every student athlete that we have on campus. Throughout the interview process, I told the panel, not only did I want to influence athletics, but I wanted to help influence the entire campus as a whole and help have a profound impact on every student that walked the campus of Cedar Creek High School. And so that's my goal, that's my mission, and I'm just really excited about the opportunity, and I'm very appreciative of it.
Thank you. Thank you. Coach, we thank you for choosing Bash Drop Independent School District, and we are eager to support you, get you off on the right track. Thank you for everything that you've already done. I've heard nothing but excellent things and very positive reports, so welcome to your family, and you're very blessed to have the support. Look at the support. We know you'll be successful, so thank you all for coming. We appreciate it and welcome.
Well, welcome.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
All right, we had an addition to our, Coach, you may want to stick around with this one. This is a fun one here, but we had addition to our agenda here. We have the SSAC students who want to give a presentation here, I believe. Oh, here we come, all right.
Oh, now you're here.
We know last week was your 60th birthday, so.
60th birthday, Mr. Edwards, yes.
I don't know who invited these kids. What is going on?
So from Circa, we wanted to get you 60 signatures for your 60th birthday.
Oh, wow, yeah.
Listen, everybody, I went to great lengths to avoid that birthday, so much so that I called a snow day so we wouldn't have. Come on, I can't escape.
He got plenty of tags, trust me, on that day.
Don't worry, there's more. We have 60 Hershey kisses for you to kissing your 50s goodbye.
Cedar Creek High School was not able to attend this evening, but they do have a certificate for you that they'll be sending over. It's a certificate that states, welcome to the wonder years. Wonder where your phone's at? Wonder where you parked your car? Things like that. They've also sent some little, well, the pill bottles, but they're Skittles in them with arthritis medication or.
You guys are doing great for my job. I wonder where I work.
And it says, take as needed. All right.
Thank you. To the principals, Ms. Stagman, Ms. Gabriel, is Mr. Conrady here? I want all these kids in detention. Thank you all very much. It's very special to me. I appreciate you.
All right, looks like we're ready to move along to our open forum. We do have a couple individuals signed up. The board welcomes comments from district citizens and employees and individuals or group representatives who have signed up, may speak focusing on public education topics. Please note that the board cannot discuss or act upon any issue not listed on the agenda. The purpose for open forum is to gather input only. Agenda-related issues will be addressed at the appropriate time. We do have two speakers, and we will take them in the order that they signed up and allow them three minutes to speak. And our first speaker here is Savannah Shaver. Please come up to the podium.
Hello, my name is Savannah Shaver. I've been teaching for Bash Drop ISD. This is my fifth year. It is my seventh year teaching overall. At about 11:00 PM tonight, it'll be two weeks since my sister discovered her husband after he took his own life. I took three days of my time out to go be there with her. And I emailed my principal, Mrs. Cooper, got a very heartfelt, very sincere response. I emailed Mrs. Green Gass, got a very beautiful response. I emailed Dr. Lee and got a very scripted lukewarm response. And I emailed Mr. Edwards and got no response at all. We do not offer bereavement leave. We are one of the districts in this area that don't. There are several that do. Working for y'all for this long and not getting a response from my superintendent, who I've never seen on a campus, to walk. I've never had a conversation with you despite working for you for five years. In my old district, our superintendent was there multiple times a month. Small district, I get you can't be there every time, but a response to something like that would have been nice. It would have been helpful. I'm out of days. I did not plan for my brother-in-law to take his life. I did not plan for it to be early in the week. I did not plan for it to be this late in the school year. So I did not have time. I had to choose between paying my bills and being there for my sister. I find it shameful, kind of embarrassing, that a district would not offer that for employees they truly care about. This is something that our district needs to offer for their employees. It is how you show that you care and you support them and their families. That is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving along to our second speaker, that'd be Isabella Camerader and Athletics. Please come to the podium.
Hi again. So this is the first year that Circa was allowed to participate in sports, so one more appreciation for y'all. We would like to say thank you for this amazing opportunity. It has truly been such a fun opportunity to be part of team, some of us letter. So as a thank you, we made you some cards for appreciation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, that will conclude our open forum. At this time, we'll move into our superintendent's report. We have facilities and operation report of the 2021-2023 bond programs update. Our presenter is Lee Raspberry, our director of construction and planning. Mr. Raspberry, welcome.
Board members, Mr. Edwards, thanks for having me here this evening. I'm happy to share with you some updates from the 21-23 bond construction projects. 21 bond projects, really the last of the projects to close out are the Bash Drop and Cedar Creek Middle School weight rooms. Aside from those, all of our other 21 bond projects have closed out, and we've completed them. These two weight rooms, about 99% complete. We've got some final, we've got some final glass doors and glass coming in in March, and then we have some security fencing to put up. But the weight rooms themselves are complete. They're up and running, and they're occupied with new weights, as you can see. So the students are currently using them. I talked with a couple of the coaches, and they're excited about having these things. They can't fit the entire football team in there, but they're going through round-robin drills, so they're using other areas to drill, but they're really, really happy with the way that these weight rooms turned out. They're about just over 2,000 square feet apiece, so they're really nice weight rooms. So you can see that's over at Bash Drop, but all the weights have been moved in. They did this about two weeks ago, and they're being occupied, so we're happy with those. 2023 projects are all underway. This is one of our newest elementary schools, 105,000 square feet. This project is on schedule. Photo of it, drone photo from the air, you can see all of the areas are built up. The classroom wing now has the roof on it, and all the second floor's been poured, all the steel's up. So they're really making a lot of progress on Adleton, very happy with it. There's two more photos. You can see all the roofs dried in, and then it'll get a mod bit membrane shortly. That's the second floor of the classroom wings. There's the cafeteria and stage area, and then in the upper right-hand corner is the kitchen area. And then ES 10 in the Silverleaf Development. Again, this will be another 105,000 square foot school. It's currently in the design phase. There's a drone footage, or drone photo of Silverleaf, the development. And so you'll see 71 in your top left-hand corner, and actually, the red building that you see up there is Bertol Farms, the pecan place. So we're kind of catty-cornered from that. That's in the, right across the road from that is Tractor Supply. And we're about three-quarters of the mile into the subdivision, so where you see the yellow X's, that's where the campus is going to be situated. So we're hoping to get started very soon on that project as well. Be very, very similar in scope to ES 9 or Adleton. Bash Drop High School, we have a new classroom wing and continued renovations. This is about to start. We've got the new classroom wing is in DD phase. As a matter of fact, the pricing will come out this week for DD, so it's on time. Here's an artist rendering of the new classroom wing that you see. The existing classroom wing that was completed last year is there to your right, connected by, that connection in the center will be going from the new classroom wing or the recently completed classroom wing to the new classroom wing. There's a rendering of the inside, first floor. Another rendering of the inside, one of the breakout areas off one of the corridors. New police and operations facility. This project was delayed slightly because of some permitting with the county, but we've finally got that taken care of. We received our permit on December 31st, and our CMAR, CHASCO, has already started mobilizing and getting ready to start that project, so we're excited about that as well. Rendering of the front elevation and one of the side elevations. Mina Elementary rebuild. The demo and make-safe for this project has already begun. Our CMAR, Bartley Cock, has already mobilized and occupied the campus. They're actually starting demo later this week, and they'll be working through the weekend on demo. This project too is on time and within budget. Happy about Mina. Bash Drop and Cedar Creek Middle School additions. These projects have just started. Bash Drop Middle School has just started. We started moving some earth around at Bash Drop Middle School and starting on the new pad there. Cedar Creek Middle School, we're still, we have a permit that's still pending with the county, but we're moving along. We're trying to get that permit cleared so we can start Cedar Creek Middle School, but even if it takes another two to three weeks, which is what we're thinking, we'll still start on time and finish on time. Riverside Middle School renovations presently underway. The first phase of the interior renovation is complete. They've already started the second phase. The gym and fine arts additions are underway. Again, this project is on time and within budget. Couple of photographs there. This is the new gym that you see, where we've got red iron going up, and then another drone view of the new track, track and field area, along with fine arts there to the left and the gym in the rear. Creekside, we got a little bit of a late start with Creekside. Again, being in the county, permitting was a little lengthy, but we finally got our permit for Creekside, and it didn't impact any of the interior renovations. Those started on time. Those weren't subject to permitting. However, all of the site development was subject, and it started a little bit late, but we're still going to make our delivery on Creekside Middle School. Again, you can see here, we haven't got red iron up on the gym just yet, but track and field, since we've done this photo, the track and field has been completed, or the grading has been completed. We've got our final grade, and all the fittings or all the footings and all the piers have been poured for the gym. Cedar Creek High School classroom addition. Building pad and piers are underway. Utility package is complete. This project too is on schedule. This is another Bartlet Cock project. A couple of photos for you. You can see the classroom addition, the pad that they're building for the classroom addition right there. So it's on time as well. They're doing a great job. Any questions about construction?
Any questions from the board?
Somebody's got to have questions.
Great job.
No?
Glad it's moving forward.
We're doing great. We're doing great. The projects are on time. We're happy about them.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you very much.
All right, that moves us along to our academic report, which is for information only. Are there any questions on the academic report?
Yes, I do have some, Mr. President. Excuse me. I don't know, is Rachel here, or do I want to just, Jennifer, maybe you?
Okay.
Oh, she's here. Rachel's here.
Oh, okay. Just looking at it, there were two, I guess, two areas that I would like a little bit more explanation. The School City pilot and then the MOY winter map test. Just if you could explain it, if there was a cost involved, what were we hoping to accomplish with those two?
So, do I need to push the button? No, okay. The School City pilot is looking at our local assessment platform. So the one we are currently using, School City would just be, we're piloting it, so we're just looking into it. We're only using it right now with our middle school science team, and so some of the features that it adds is it allows accommodations to be embedded, so teachers don't manually have to put in accommodations for students' local assessments. It feeds in from the data we already have. And then also, it is more aligned on the technology-enhanced items. They're very similar to what students see on the STAR test, so that platform puts them in a better model. And then also, it allows us to upload those science assessments instead of manually entering them. So those are some of the reasons that we've looked into this one, and we had researched some other software, but we're still with our current one. We're just piloting it right now, so we're just in the initial stages of collecting information from our teachers, our students, and our leadership looking at that. So we will keep you updated, the board, as we continue to look into that. The cost is only. The cost has only been $5,000 because it's just, we aren't only paying for the training pieces and then just the initial setup of the system.
Why are you looking at that and not just going with what we have currently?
So like I said, the pieces of the manual entry that our teachers are having to do for accommodations. And then the integration of the technology enhanced items that are more comparable to what students see on state assessments. And then also we purchased new science curriculum and those assessments were in a file that couldn't be imported to our current system. And this one allows those files to be imported instead of our specialists having to manually create all of those assessments.
How often do you all look at these types of assessments, performance monitors such as that? I mean, is it on an annual, I mean, is it contract, a year contract, three-year contract?
So yes, our current platform is a yearly contract. And so we do have to go out and get prices for all the different products before we make this yearly purchase.
Okay, okay. And what about that other one, the, that map test window? Is that?
Yes. So I'm actually going to let Ms. Emmerly answer that one for you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So math is our, our K-12 literacy and math screener and we give it three times a year. Similar to what Rachel was talking about with piloting that, this is something we looked into. This is our second year of doing it. And we wanted to look at a K-12 screener that looks at student assessment data over time. So we've got something that eventually we'll be able to track students' progress from kindergarten all the way up to high school. And so it provides that lens to be able to look at that. And it also suffices state mandates with our, our seventh grade reading screener we have to give. It's another added to our dyslexia screener that we're required to give. It provides additional monitoring for our emergent bilinguals. There's several things that are required by the state that this system helps us to fulfill that. And so that's why we went with that two years ago is it gives multiple data pieces that we can look at student data. And then with our progress monitoring on it, the House Bill 3 presentation that we did earlier in the fall, Tricia's presentation over multilingual, all-included data from this map assessment.
So a lot of these performance monitoring programs is because of state mandates? To monitor them to stay in compliance?
It's that and the student progress piece that gives us a consistent layer to do that. But we also, as we're looking through them, we want to look, you don't want to have multiple ones. You want to have one that, like I said, will cover all of these state mandates for us.
Okay. Oh, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, can I keep going?
Sure. Are we still under the academic?
Uh, I believe, am I still? Yes, I believe so. Yes, the college and career. I, I have a couple of them. You talked about the eighth grade invasion. I want to hear about that one. And then I also want to commend, and if you can talk a little bit more about the HMI academia, the one at A and M. I think that's, that's awesome.
Eighth grade invasion, we loaded up all of our eighth graders at Bass, our Bassdrop Middle School and bused them to Bassdrop High School. We had fine arts performance. We had students go to a CTE and elective fair. And then we had student ambassadors tour, tour the students through the school. So in coordination with BHS and their administrators, we did this so that students have a better idea of everything they have offered to them at our high schools. And then we did the same thing on the Cedar Creek side, took our Cedar Creek Middle School eighth graders to Cedar Creek High School. They saw the same thing, performances from fine arts, our CTE and electives fair and had the tours as well. So in eighth grade, students have to create their four-year plan and determine their endorsement. So we just want to make sure they have a full understanding of all of their opportunities. We got some great feedback from teachers, parents. We had one parent report back that their student wasn't aware of ROTC because that's not something they had ever seen. So that opened up their opportunity for that. We had a student, Ms. Pearson shared a student emailed to her that, that it was fun and they learned some stuff. So really great feedback and response for that.
It's, hopefully they'll transition a little better, a little easier?
That is our hope, along with our eighth grade, our college and career exploration course. All year long, they learn about their opportunities, kind of look at different careers. And this is kind of, course selection is coming up, so they're having to choose their courses. So this is the introductory into that, along with our counselors go down, our high school counselors go down and speak to all the students about their opportunities. So kind of three touch points before they actually make that decision.
That is awesome. That is awesome. And what about, describe, because it says here that you were only one of two districts that Texas A&amp;M invited y'all.
So it was actually the Army. The Army invited us, but it was held at Texas A&amp;M. And we got that invite through our, one of our P-Tech partners, Accutronics. So one of our coordinators was at that and met with one of the military recruiters and they invited us. We were, like I said, one of only two in the surrounding area. Our students got to see kind of engineering, different type of engineering careers, look at robotics. And I think the great thing about these type of opportunities is it allows students to see that there are careers beyond just going to college. You know, they could get, there's some technical things. They can go to the military to get some of this training. So the thing is that we want to give them as many opportunities, both in the classroom and outside of the classroom, to be able to look at their possibilities.
How many students went?
Roughly 40 from our high schools and then I believe about 10 from, from the other district.
That's great. That is awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, okay. I still think we're under it. Then I have on the, but on the multilingual, Trish here? You're going to do it too? Oh, okay. Thank you. You're going to ask, I think TEA has already approved the bilingual exception and ESL waiver application. And I know we did that for the 24, 25 year. Is there a negative, negative consequences by continuing to ask for these waivers? Does it hurt the students? What's the, what's the impact?
It's that, as we know, just across the state, getting enough bilingual teachers is always something. We have a great partnership with TEA on this. And we work through this comprehensive plan that includes really developing these teachers, making sure we've got a plan to build up and grow our own into getting them certified and making sure that we're doing that and then also using the curriculum that we have in place to help support those teachers also. So we have to develop the plan. We have to give it to TEA. That's the partnership we use. And so it's not, there's not the negative impact on that because we're working side by side with them to develop this plan and submit it. And so with that, I know Trish put down here right now, just through this plan and what they're working on, because it is from a shortage of bilingual teachers. We're fortunate, we currently have over 15 teachers working towards bilingual certification that should be certified in the next three years. And that's part of what's implemented in this comprehensive plan that she submits to the state with these waivers and exceptions.
Does it impact the students at all?
I mean, we're, we're always aiming to have a certified bilingual teacher in the classroom. That's what you want. With this plan we're putting in place to try to, through the curriculum, through the professional learning, provide them the same level of instruction that we would with a certified teacher. So we're, we're doing all the things to give them that daily comprehensive instruction.
So it may not be a certified teacher, but it, it would be a teacher that could communicate with them.
Yes. Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. I'm sorry. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
We have teachers that are, are fluently bilingual who are in, working through our dual language programs in the younger grades. And we're working towards getting them that bilingual certification.
Okay, okay, okay. And I know, I'm almost done. The community relations is, I just, there's a couple of things there. You mentioned there, the Happy Kitchen. If someone could, that Happy Kitchen experience with the parents, how was, how was it?
Part of our multilingual department.
Okay.
I don't know if Trish.
So Happy Kitchen has been great. The parents come in and they, they learn recipes. They're able to walk away with the recipe they created there as well as the items that they need to do it. Actually, and I'll send you pictures, they just had one tonight where they, they cooked hamburgers. And it's just, it's great to see the parents coming out and engaging with this. So it's been a very positive experience that we want to continue for our families.
You, they don't cook though, right?
They cook there.
They cook there?
They, yeah, they show them how to make the recipe. Like there's somebody that's going through, show them how to make the recipe. They leave with all the ingredients to go home and cook it at home too.
Oh, okay. To cook it at home. Nice. Okay, 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 okay. Thank you. I think that was it. Uh, community, now community relations. Sorry. And I think with this was, again, on the information, it said the PTAs and the PTSAs were very active. I want to give you all kudos. Teachers, parents, students, that's awesome because we have to get the community involved. So please pass that on. That is, that is amazing.
Very proud of them. They are, they are stepping up and we have active PTAs at almost all of our campuses. So it's, it's wonderful. Yes.
And, okay, I'm getting probably a little, are you also reading the, the Bassdrop School District, along with the Chamber of Commerce, went to a Texas School Public Relations Association conference in San Antonio?
So we haven't gone yet. We'll be going, we'll be going next month. Actually, I won't be at the school board meeting next month because we'll be out there at, at T-Spro, hoping to win some awards.
Is that just talking about the district and what we're doing and?
So the presentation is going to feature the We Believe in BISD partnership, which is where the Bassdrop Chamber of Commerce and their businesses support our schools. We pay a, the group pays a visit to each campus throughout the year. And sponsorship dollars are used to provide snacks and treats for the teachers as well as a wish list, wish list item. So campuses choose anything from a popcorn maker and all the supplies to, yesterday at Red Rock, we, they got, they got a, a cart and some dish soap and sponges for their teacher's lounge and a toaster. They were very excited, believe it or not, about the dish soap and the sponges.
I can understand sometimes. It's the little things.
It is the little things.
Little things. Okay. And I think I just have one more, but for Diane, human resources. Thank you, ma'am.
And all that with the, with the we believe.
They are always looking for more sponsors. So the more sponsors, the more money, the more things we can give back to the, to the staff and to the schools.
Well, it's, 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 it's nice to hear, I think, that the, the chamber, which is businesses in the community, in the, in the school district, they're getting some partnerships. Because there's a lot of, I would say there's a lot of people out there, a lot of businesses not aware of the district of what we needing, what can happen. And it's just a, an exposure of, hey, I'm this, I do this and, and get the kids involved. So that's awesome. Just one last is on the human resources. You mentioned that the TeachWorthy Indiana Wesleyan University. You're hoping to partnership with that, get some non-degree teachers to be certified. Given what happened in April and May, you know what I'm asking.
I know, I know.
Is this credit, is this university accredited in Texas?
Yes. So I, I actually just met with a group of superintendents last night. They turned to me and said, well, how long have you been a superintendent? And I'm like, well, I'm not, but I was invited. And that we met in the fall with this group and, and Indiana Wesleyan is a fully accredited. If you go on the Texas Education, they have a site, a database of accredited post-secondary. They're listed. One of the largest private universities in Indiana, brick and mortar, like it's an actual school. So not that the other was not, but this is fully accredited. And you know, the thing that's really neat with this partnership is you don't necessarily go through an educator prep. You graduate with your bachelor's degree. And they, what they do is they look at you individually, what you want to teach. And they kind of tell you what direction to go. They allow some of our professional development to count towards your 120 credit hours. So it's a cost savings. And they partner with TeachWorthy. And part of what you have to do for that ACP also counts towards some of your 120-hour requirement. So there's some, almost a full year of cost savings. We as a district have to provide the professional development, the university vets it, tells us how many credit hours it could be. If it falls short of what we want, we're able to then provide additional to get them as close to that credit hour threshold. But fully accredited TeachWorthy is also, you know, an ACP that, that is approved by TEA.
Did they come and, and did the university come to Bassdrop? Or was this in a conference that you all started talking?
So.
How was the partnership developed?
They, they reached out to us and we had a, kind of a sit down, went through a, a presentation. I was very intrigued. The thing that I think excites me the most, kind of talking about multilingual, they, TeachWorthy has a bilingual route and a special education route. So if we can get Indiana Wesleyan to help us, like what courses do these individuals need to take so that when they get into the ACP, they qualify for that route? You know, that could be something that we work on to help grow your own. Because you know, it really is, it is our pair professionals that are in our classrooms every day that are interested in going to school, their financial barriers. So we're trying to find every route. And we do have, this isn't a singleton. We have other ACPs coming in. We actually had one in honor of Barry's birthday and then it got canceled because of the weather. But you know, we had our degreed people that need to get in. So we had another program that came in. So ultimately our goal is to provide as many opportunities as we can and let the candidate then decide. We're working on the handouts that we give them to kind of teach them what they need to look for, like cost, flexibility. What kind of support do you provide? Just, you know, I might not know a lot about an ACP. What am I looking for? So we're trying to provide as much information as we can.
Teachers excited?
I'm sorry?
Are they excited?
The.
New avenue to get certified?
I think so. I, I think, again, I think we as a, we have to decide what our partnership with them is going to look like because it, talking to the other superintendents, they each, it's a little bit different. You know, they have cohorts of five or maybe it's open to as many as, to me, it's like, let's open it up and see how many we can get. I don't want to limit if we can help it. But I, I do think it's a really neat opportunity.
Are there any type of scholarships either the district gives or they give? I mean, is it enroll in a university and I can get a scholarship that you can help the teachers?
They, I, I've not with this particular program. Again, if we can get some of our professional development approved along with the, what you have to do with TeachWorthy, that's almost a year of college credit right there. So that's, you know, so the superintendent that I spoke with, the four candidates that they had that graduated, I think it was December, they came in with almost 60 college hours. And then between the professional development, TeachWorthy graduated in a year. And now they're in, in ACP. And so it was a really smooth, they're excited about the next round of candidates. So I do think it's a really neat opportunity. And you know, we, again, you need to look at what we can do to help support them through that process so that we can get more bilingual and special education teachers in our classrooms.
But we're not limiting it. Okay. Other, other, that's interesting that they would limit it. Okay. Thank you.
I've got, thank you.
Any other questions on the, the reports there, Financial, Human Resource, Police Department? All right. If there are none, we'll move along to our consent agenda items. Would any board member like to pull any of the consent agenda items for discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving along to our action items. Our next presenter is Dr. Kristy Lee, our deputy superintendent. Our first action item here is consider approval of the attendance boundaries for the 2025 to 2026 school year. Dr. Lee.
Much. And thank you to all of you school board trustees for everything that you do. I know you do it. I know you do it for the pay. But the second benefit, you truly are making a difference and, and we appreciate you. So we brought this to you in November, presented to you the initial boundaries in conjunction with our demographics report. Following that November meeting, we went out into the community, we held town hall meetings, we put the boundary information on our website and shared it with our families through the family newsletter. We collected some feedback, answered questions. And so tonight, what I'm bringing you is the, the final version. So I'm not going to go through all of the same thing that we went through in November, but it'll be a summary. So we, we did have to make new boundaries in order to factor in the ninth elementary school, Adleton. We had to adjust new boundaries to factor in the third and fourth middle schools, Riverside and Creekside. And a very minor adjustment was made to the high school boundary line. Essentially, it, it occurs in the colony where, long before there were houses there, the boundary line was drawn and we had to just sort of clean up one line so that it followed the trajectory of a street instead of splitting a house in two. So this is the now proposed 25-26 boundary line factoring in those nine elementary schools. We made a slight adjustment to Camino Real, moving some students to CCE. You'll notice the red boundary is the current boundary, then the colors factor in the 25-26. To Lost Pines, that arrow pointing to that Aqua section there, that was in Lost Pines, going to Mina. At Blue Bonnet, a couple of small changes to clean up a, a small section there at 1209 that was going to Blue Bonnet will be moving to Colony Oaks. And then the new subdivision or neighborhood, Valverde, that's, has not started yet, that would be going to Blue Bonnet. Couple of changes for Emile. Again, that Aqua section there in the center of your screen, that will move to Mina. And there at the bottom left, that was in Colony, it was in Mina, is going to Emile. So now all of Tahitian Village will be going to Emile. And then quite a few little changes for Mina. They will get some students from Lost Pines, which I showed you earlier, some from Emile moving into Mina, some moving out of Mina into Emile, and then a good section there along 304, next to Colorado River and Tahitian, moving into Adleton. And then Colony Oaks, some of those moving into Mina, some of them moving to Blue Bonnet and that small section along 1209 that would move to Colony Oaks. Our middle school boundaries now are divided into four, so you have two going on the Cedar Creek side and two going into the Bastrop side. Creekside will be primarily Cedar Creek Elementary, Blue Bonnet Elementary, and what's the other school? I'm drawing a blank. And some of Camino Real, Cedar Creek would be, some of Camino Real, Red Rock. And then you have there Bastrop Middle School, some Colony Oaks, some Mina, some Adleton, a Riverside, again, Lost Pines, some Emile, some Mina there. And then high school boundaries, we're not going to talk about high school, but that's, that's what that looks like. You can't tell, it's just was, was one tiny little difference. Our projected enrollment, so 25-26 and 26-27 school years are shown up here. You can see nine elementary schools listed. For the 26-27 year, what's important is that some of those numbers look a little bit high, like Cedar Creek Elementary, for example, Blue Bonnet, Lost Pines over 800. But once Elementary 10 opens up, which we are anticipating for the fall of 2026, those numbers would all change and the, the total enrollment would be divided by 10 elementary schools, not nine. And then two years are displayed for middle school because in the 25-26 school year, it won't be six, seven, and eight at those four schools. All the sixth graders will go to either Riverside Elementary or Creekside Elementary, and then they'll have half the seventh graders. The other half of the seventh graders will be at Bastrop Middle School and Cedar Creek Middle School, along with all the eighth graders. So the 26-27 school year is where you will have four campuses with six, seven, and eight. And I'm happy to take any questions before asking you to approve these new boundaries.
I know we had some public input, and how was that received?
Yeah, I think for the most part, it was, it was well received. We did have, you know, some folks that really want us to make some high, high school boundary changes, but that just, we just didn't feel like we were prepared to do that this go around. We know that once Elementary 10 comes online, we're going to have to go back through this boundary process and that may be a good time to consider that. Of course, it's always difficult when families, you know, are used to one school and they're being asked to move to a different school. But I think really, for the most part, our families took it in stride. It helped that we had already been through this with Colony Oaks and Camino Real. And, you know, it was really exciting for those families that even though they left their old school, they got to go to a brand new school. And so we anticipate that the families that are having to move will, will take it in stride as they do and, and our principals and staff, they'll make all those new kiddos feel welcome.
And it looks like the process went, went well with our demographers and, and please note, we owe this to the taxpayers before we go out and ask for another bond to build another elementary, another middle school, another high school. We need to balance them and exhaust all resources before we go to them, asking them for, for, for bond money. And so it looks like the process as well, our demographers are very experienced in this. You have meetings where they can communicate as well as they can come here and express their concerns as well and our thoughts also.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
Sounds like y'all did a great job on that process.
Thank you.
This time I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the attendance boundaries for the 2025-2026 school year as presented.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. Moving on to item B, consider approval of legislative priorities for the 89th Legislative Session. Dr. Lee.
Yes, thank you. So we brought these to you in November, the, the first time that you would have seen them. It's now time to approve those. They center around six different priorities. Local control, student safety and mental health concerns, accountability, education funding, vouchers, and teacher recruitment and retention. So you've had an opportunity to look at those. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but our, it would be our goal to, especially as we go to the Capitol in February at, for Bastrop County Day at the Capitol, to be able to advocate before our state legislators what we, what we desire for our public schools and what we think is best for our students and our, and our teachers.
Does the state require us to have these priorities?
They do not.
Okay.
Have we, uh, did we meet with other districts to come up with this list or is this strictly just Bastrop's?
No, we do factor in, not necessarily meeting with other districts, just to discuss this one topic, but superintendents talk to each other certainly, trustees talk to each other also, asking what are, what are you all focusing on? We also look at the organizations that are advocating all the time on behalf of public schools, like Raise Your Hand Texas and the Texas Association of School Administrators. They have, you know, key ideas and we, we examine all of those and say, they have lots of priorities. So we kind of take those and say, well, what do we think is best for Bastrop ISD to present to you all for consideration?
And there'll be other districts that develop their own legislative priorities?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so hopefully it'll be.
But some don't. And, you know, I don't, I don't know, you know, how they make that decision, whether they want to have a set of legislative priorities or not, but certainly it would be, it's, it's good for us to, to present, being so close here to Austin.
I'm not sure it's going to do any good, but they're going to do it. They want to anyways. But with that said, I will move to approve the legislative priorities of the 89th Legislative Session as presented.
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with those, Dr. Lee.
And you, trustees, you're welcome to join us in February for the Bastrop County Day at the Capitol. We will be going and have meetings set up with Representative Gertie's and Senator Shortner and, and others, and we'll plead our case.
Absolutely. Well, I think it's good for the chamber to be in, you know, bored with us and aligned and have a bigger voice.
Absolutely.
That's, that's good. Thanks for doing that. Now, next, we'll move along to item C, consider approval of Amendment of Number Six between Gold Star Transit and Bastrop ISD. Dr. Lee.
Thank you very much. So this is a, an amendment to our contract, which ends here this summer, so this would be a five-year extension for, for us. That Gold Star has been an incredible partner for us. They're very easy to work with, they're very student centric, and it has, it has been great. The, the general manager that we have here in Bastrop is J.W. Barrett, who I believe is somewhere behind me. He has been a great partner, very easy to work with, to make sure our students are taken care of. So what this amendment does to our contract, what, the big thing I want to, I want to talk about is that 77% of our buses right now have seat belts. They're our newer fleet that we just did just a few years ago. But we have 23 buses that don't have seat belts. And I, I know that, you know, there's, there's debate about whether, you know, seat belts work or whether they don't, but we believe that they are a, a safety feature and we wanted all of our buses to have them. And so with this amendment, this would make 100% of our fleet have seat belts for our students. So in the first year, so starting this fall, we would receive 30, 36 brand-new buses, 13 brand-new, and then we would replace the 23 buses that don't have seat belts right now. So 36 buses. In addition, we would get five more. You've seen the white buses that have the logo on them, those are our transit buses for extracurricular activities. Those are used all the time. So this would give us five more of those as well. So technically, I guess that's 41 buses this coming fall. Those will come to us wrapped, just like our other ones are, so that they match. We'll have five for the Bastrop side, five for the Cedar Creek side. And then in the 26-27 school year, we'll get four additional buses. So that, that will be great. In addition, we'll be opening up 12 new routes. We'll open up eight new routes this coming school year and four more the following year. And again, that just allows us to reduce the time that kids are on buses when we can open up new routes, which is a good thing. And then this contract also gives a pay increase, 3% pay increase for our bus drivers. So that, that's been great for recruiting and retention to, to keep that pay at a competitive level.
I know that Gold Star's been a, a good partner, even back with, with COVID and things like that and shortage of drivers and routes and, and trying to be creative and, and make things happen. And I know we've offered incentives to, to, to coaches and teachers to drive buses and things like that. It's, it's really been helpful, especially with the, the seat belts, you know, with an incident happening in our own backyard. And Chief, you've been pleased with the communications and I know we have weather days and things like that and seems like there's, there was a good working relationship there as, as well. So fantastic. Any other questions from the board?
Well, I'd just like to say I've been very impressed with the leadership of, of Gold Star and their ability to be responsive to our needs, sometimes at the last minute, making adjustments, finding ways for kids to just show up automatically, show up to find a way of getting them to the campus they need to be at. And I, I really appreciate that level of commitment on their part to the service.
Absolutely, we do.
Mr. Moore, that sounds like you're going to entertain a motion.
I would love to do this, yes. I move to approve Amendment Number Six between Gold Star Transit and Bastrop ISD as presented.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you and thank you for y'all's support and continued support and we, we look forward to, you know, and growing our relationship and being a good partner. So, thank you. All right, thank you, Dr. Lee. Moving along to item D, we'll have Casey Baldrus, please come up, will consider approval of the Bastrop County Elections Administrator Contract.
Evening, I almost said good morning. So we have an election coming up on May 3rd.
We're not getting past midnight.
So we have an election coming up on May 3rd and we contract every year with Bastrop County Elections Office to conduct our election. So in the contract, you'll find that we have a list of early voting dates, locations, and times, all that information is in there. It also includes an estimated cost, but that could change depending on anyone who's in the election.
Any questions?
So any other.
What do you mean, can change depending on?
Entities, let me know if I get this correct, Dr. Lee, but any other entities that are going to be doing elections, like in part of this contract, it could change the price. So the more, the cheaper.
Somebody doesn't end up having to call an election, then they don't have to pay for it.
Got it.
So like this round, if, if.
In our price.
Yeah, like, we've had elections in the past where every member's been unopposed. Okay? And, and so it's, it's saved us in the past.
Got it.
$20,000, $30,000. This election, because, you know, we do have people running, it's cost us $44,000 just to cover the payroll. So that's what it costs to run an election.
Got it.
For our part of the payroll facilities, things like that. But it's a joint effort as well as if the, you know, the appraisal district now is going to have elected officials if, you know, ESD, city, county, it's all right. The election office, right. It's right.
Got it, okay, okay.
And me not understanding all of this is why we are contracting.
Where are the locations going to be this time? Has that been decided yet or is that in this contract?
So, yeah, so it'll be a county-wide election. So they are all listed on there and it will be the main location, Bastrop County Courthouse Annex, and then the different branch locations, Smithville Rec Center, Cedar Creek Tax Office Annex, and North Bastrop County Community Annex.
Okay, so still not in the schools though?
And then on Election Day, there will be more locations, but not in any of our schools.
Okay.
A couple of years ago, the county went to countywide.
Okay.
So, so that you can go to any location during early voting or on Election Day in the county.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you're going through Smithville and you go to a polling location, you can vote for Bastrop ISD trustee race. But, but I don't believe on Election Day you can. Is that correct or is it?
No, on Election Day, you, so there are more locations on Election Day and you can vote at any of those locations.
Within the, within the county. So a lot of, a lot of flexibility for commuters and being a veteran community.
And that'll be, all the locations and times will be listed on our website, too. There are already.
Well, I know putting it at the schools was helpful, however, you know, it was also during school. And so we had people from the outside going into the schools, so from a security standpoint, you know, that was a little worrisome, too. So I think this is good.
All right. This time I'll entertain a motion from trustee Armstrong or trustee Moore in regards to they're not on the ballot. Do I have one?
I move to, I move to approve the Bastrop County Elections Administrator Contract as presented.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moves us along to the next one, which consider calling a Board of Trustees election for May 3rd, 2025 for place five, place six, place seven. That'd be the Board of Trustees election calendar as well as the order of the elections. I mean, comments for that?
Now that we have a contract, this is our next step, so.
I, I like the motion.
Please?
Yes, okay. I move to approve the calling Board of Trustees election for May 3rd, 2025 for place five, place six, and place seven as presented.
All right, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion carries. Fantastic, thank you very much. All right, that leads us to other information items, which are Board of Trustees, Calendar of Events, Enrollment, Single Budget Purchase Items, More Than $50,000 Budget Development, a calendar, 2025, 2026, as well as the 2025, 2026 Draft of Academic Accounters and also Revision of Policies, EIC, Local Exer, all for information only. Before we adjourn, thank you again for all the wonderful signs and, and the, the vote of confidence. I'm very honored to be part of this board and it's a, it's a great board and we're excited the district's really moving forward and, and the administration couldn't do it. This is definitely a team effort. And so we really appreciate the questions you answer and, and the things that, there's so many things, it's like Mr. Edwards always says, there's so many unbelievable things going on all the time. And so when you read a board book, you're kind of like, hey, well, I didn't know we had that. Hey, what is that? So it's, it's not that no one's doing anything wrong, it's just we want to know a little bit more about it. And it is, it is exciting to, to hear about it. So anyways, thank you and we really do appreciate it. Does anybody have any objections to adjourned this meeting? Mr. Moore, yes, sir?
Mr. Moore, yes, sir, to our student here, are you ready to sign up to be a board member?
Now that you see how much fun it is? You get back to me on that, okay? All right, that's all, thank you.
Absolutely, now thank you for being here, and I know that y'all's input on the student advisory means a lot, and Mr. Edwards meets with you, I know that it's three of the high schools, and it's great input, and we've really had a lot of success, and I wish we had more questions for you here at the meeting, but thank you for being here, it does mean a lot, and we really do appreciate it.
You're still in trouble.
That's from someone going through the wonder years, so.
Hey, he'll forget about it by tomorrow.
Yes, he will.
Or tonight, yes. All right, any objections to adjourning this meeting? If there are none, meetings adjourned, y'all have a safe evening, thank you.